Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, March 8th. Please stand for the invocation and a moment of silence.
Let's pray. God our Father, we thank you for the privilege of meeting together tonight. Father, we thank you for how you've blessed this community. We thank you for the blessings that just come unending. God, this evening, we pray for wisdom and knowledge. We give you thanks for those who serve and protect us in this community. So, Father, as this meeting goes on this evening, would your blessings be upon it? Guide everyone here to seek that which is best for their families, for our children, for the community. We thank you, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Do we have any veterans in the audience tonight? Would you all please help us start out with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys, for your service. Well, it's gonna be that kind of night, isn't it? Madam Clerk, Treasurer, would you please take the roll call of the council? You're getting ahead of yourself.
I know. Councilman Spann, Councilman Hardaway, Councilman Minchuck, Councilwoman Uszalak, Councilman Pettit, Councilman White, Council President Bella, Sixth President.
Sixth President, we have a quorum. Thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Tonight, we are honored to have the swearing-in of a new Maryville Police Department Officer, Officer George W. Fields, Jr. George, would you please approach the front here, in front of the table, and the Maryville Police Commission, and our Clerk Treasurer Kelly White Gibson will swear you in. Chief, could you join him too, please?
Yes.
So, in front of the table, Kelly, right, flip on that microphone, please.
Is it on? Yep, it is. All right, George, ready? You wanna raise your right hand? Don't have to, but you can. Okay, just repeat after me. I, George W. Fields, Jr., solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and I will faithfully, impartially, and honestly discharge my duties as a police officer for the Maryville Police Department and the town of Maryville, according to the law, and the best of my skill and ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
All right. Chief, while he signs that, would you give us a little background on Officer Fields?
Yes, good evening, everyone. George Field, Jr., if his name sounds familiar, his father is over twenty-five-year sergeant with the Maryville Police Department, George Field, Senior, is present right there. Junior is twenty-six years of age, he's a graduate of Lowell High School. He did a stint of four years with the New Chicago Police Department, he did two years with Lake Station. He also, in his side time, he's a coach, football coach, for the Westside Cougars.
All right.
But he's making adjustments, and he's gonna join our Pop Warner Football Team here in Maryville. George also had some training in K-9. He's also showing an interest in joining our Adopt a School program when he finishes training. George Field, Jr., congratulations.
That's great. Thank you, Chief. Congratulations. We won't hold your legacy against you.
Congratulations. Westside, my favorite school.
Congratulations. Moving on tonight, we have a proclamation designating the month of March as Women's History Month. The proclamation will be presented tonight by three of our female directors. First will be Vicki Binnell, Code Enforcement Director, Planning and Building Director Sheila Shine, and Economic Development Director Angie Chilcutt.
Town of Maryville proclamation, State of Indiana. The Town Council of Maryville designating the month of March as Women's History Awareness Month. Whereas every March, Women's History Month provides an opportunity to honor the generations of trailblazing women and girls who have built our nation, shaped our progress, and strengthened our character as a people. And whereas throughout our history, despite hardship, exclusion, and discrimination, women have striven and sacrificed for equity and equality in communities across the country. Generations of Native American women were stewards of the land and continue to lead the fight for climate justice. And whereas Black women fought to end slavery, advocate for civil rights, and passed the Voting Rights Act. Suffragists helped pass the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution so that no American could be denied a vote on the basis of sex.
And whereas, standing on the shoulders of heroes who came before them, today's women and girls continue to carry forward the mission of ensuring our daughters have the same opportunity as our sons. Women of the labor movement are achieving monumental reforms to help all workers secure better pay, benefits, and the safety they deserve. LGBTQI-plus women and girls are leading the fight for justice and freedom so that everyone can realize the full promise of America. And whereas despite the progress being made, women and girls, especially those of color, still face systemic barriers to full participation and wide gaps in opportunity and equality. The COVID-19 pandemic has exposed and exacerbated those disparities, which has disproportionately impacted women's labor force participation, multiplied the burden on paid and unpaid caregivers, and increased rates of gender-based violence. And whereas workers contend with gender and racial wage gaps that can amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars denied over the course of their lifetimes, the Congress sent the Equal Rights Amendment to the state for ratification fifty years ago, and it is long past time that the principles of women's equality should be enshrined in our Constitution.
And whereas this Women's History Month, as we reflect on the achievements of women and girls across the centuries and pay tribute to the pioneers who have paved the way, let us recommit to the fight and help realize the deeply American vision of a more equal society where every person has a shot at pursuing the American dream. In doing so, we will advocate economic growth, our health and safety, and the security of our town, our nation, and the world. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, does hereby proclaim that each March going forward, commencing with March 2022, shall be designated and recognized as Women's History Awareness Month, and call upon the citizens of Maryville to observe, discuss, and educate others with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and other activities about the value and contributions that women have made to the betterment of our nation, state, and more specifically, our hometown of Maryville. We invite the residents to visit website www.womenshistorymonth.gov to learn more about the vital contributions of women in our history.
Thank you, ladies, wonderful job.
At this time, I will make a motion for the proclamation.
Mrs. Uszalak, you have the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will make a motion for the proclamation, the State of Indiana, by the Town Council of Maryville, designating the month of March as Women's History Awareness Month.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Uszalak, the second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of this proclamation. Is there any discussion by the council? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Marge.
Thank you.
We do have another piece of correspondence I received from Sheila Shine. It was the Luke family of Brands had reached out. They would not be able to make the meeting tonight, and they asked that the Town Council table the action for the rezoning on their project.
Motion to table.
Second.
A motion by Mr. White, or second by Mrs. Uszalak, to table this until further notice. If any of you are here, though, to address us at public comment, which is coming up next about this project, feel free to do so. Okay. Any discussion on the motion to table? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Move now to public comment. Please state your name and address for the record, and we allow three minutes for public comment tonight. Please approach the podium if you'd like to make a public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Gentlemen, please approach.
Ironically, I came to speak about the Luke station.
You still can't.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My name is Craig Sefel. I live at 7128 Wallace Street in Maryville, of course. Okay, so I came to discuss the gas station they're proposing to put in there. I live, I don't know, seven or eight houses down from there. And as we talked about in, I think it was a zoning committee meeting, I moved there because it's a nice, quiet, clean place, very nice, safe neighborhood to raise our kids, and I feel that if they put the gas station there, all of that is at risk. It's a residential area, there's no businesses anywhere near there besides what would be the gas station. And I feel like you're disrupting the entire flow of the neighborhood, the peace, the clean. You know, I'd be worried about gas leaking out of there, fumes, noises, all kinds of garbage and things, and then it's nothing against Luke Oil. I'm sure they're a perfectly fine company. Just gas stations in general, I feel like, don't belong at that location. And the gentleman at the previous meeting where they discussed this from Luke said he didn't want to force this upon anyone. But as probably most people here, and definitely on that last meeting, nobody in the neighborhood came to speak in favor of it, nobody wanted it. Just building that gas station when no one there wants it is literally forcing it upon us by definition. There's no reason it needs to be there. There's gas stations, four or five gas stations within a mile of that location, and there's no reason there needs to be one right in that spot. So I'm strongly opposed to that, and I feel that probably most of the people here have that same attitude. Thank you.
Mr. President, at the last meeting on February 22nd, 2022.
Your name and address, please, for the record, if you don't mind, Brian.
Brian Messarch, 201 E68 Place.
Thank you, sorry.
At the last meeting, Mr. President, you quoted, "On February 25th, 2016, Town Council adopted in ordinance 1623, which is referred to as our civility order for public meetings." Two minutes, and you also mentioned about two minutes not being enough time, and that Town Council had decided to bump it up to three minutes for citizens. There was no Town Council meeting on February 25th, 2016, ordinance 1623, which was enacted on August 9th, 2016, as a rezoning request, and what you actually quoted from was the Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 2, Section 263, improper conduct, refusal to obey orders. That was ordinance 721 enacted March 14th, 1972, that was about fifty years ago, and the two minutes, Section 262, and also Section 256. Residents have always had three minutes, and then to speak according to law, according to the Municipal Code of Maryville. And why I bring this up is my issue with communication. And when you have a statement that is completely false, no factual anything contained, it erodes trust, and it erodes the trust in the public, and how can we trust what's going on when this is easily looked up, easily checked, and completely false? I'm really upset about the whole three-minute thing. Like, I've been cheated out of ten, fifteen minutes, and I'm pretty sure none of you would like to give me that extra ten, fifteen minutes, but I bring it up because also you want to adhere to procedures, and procedurally, we don't follow the rules in the Municipal Code. Right now, the public comment should be the fifteenth, according to Section 256. This should be order number fifteen in town business. If you want to change it, then change the law. Go through the process, change the law. If you want to temporarily change it for each meeting, there's also a process to follow for that. Breaking the law is no different than having a fence in the front yard, grass too tall, junky car in the driveway, camper in a driveway past October. We, the rules are for everybody, and that's what I'm here for. The idea of transparency in communication, we have my neighborhood, a warehouse, and the gas station. How about we inform the neighborhood, hey, we want to do this? That seems like it would be a little bit fair, not informing just the property owners that are adjacent to it. It would seem like we should be wanting to work together and proceed that way. When we're not transparent about these things, we can't proceed, and it creates hostility among the public. And at some point in time, the public is gonna come out and start, like, raging against everything, and that does not move the town forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, brothers and sisters, Anthony Timmons, says 7165 Wallace Street. Like the one brother said, the last two meetings, it's not a big show up today, but nobody in the neighborhood wants this gas station. It's a lot of reasons why, health reasons, light pollution, noise, traffic, and I'm gonna just repeat what I said at the last other two meetings. I'm pretty sure Luke builds beautiful gas stations, but when I'm seventy-five years old, and that lease is up thirty years from now, I grew up on 36th and Washington and Gary, Indiana. It was a beautiful Shell stations on the corner of 35th Avenue. When that lease was up and Shell moved out, other people moved in. It's a beautiful gas station on 45th and Georgia. Anybody familiar with Gary, know what gas station that is? That used to be a beautiful gas station. It isn't anymore. And when I'm seventy-five, I don't want to see a rundown, abandoned gas station around the corner from my house. I implore the people from Luke, if they want to help the community, be aware that Old Stripes is at. It's a big community over there, we could use another grocery store, but we don't need no another damn gas station, especially around the corner from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edith Murray, 6889 Wickham Street, I stand in solidarity with the residents that we do not want a gas station. The representative from Luke stood here at the podium last time and mentioned that there was five or six million dollars that they would invest in this gas station. I think there's a better utilization of that funding, if that's the type of money that they have, that they could do something better than pollute the neighborhood. I brought my daughter here because I want her to see the council people that have the voting power for Maryville, and to see that she can aspire to also be able to sit in seats like this, and to know that her voice counts, and to live in a neighborhood that does not have the type of pollution that will come from this gas station. So I, too, ask that the council people, when this meeting is, when they show up, to present their case again, that you vote no, that we, again, do not want the gas station. Thank you.
Hey, Sabina Miller, 3120 West 75th Place, Maryville. I live just down the road from that proposed gas station, and I go that route just about every single day when I'm going to work or back. Whenever I go through, there is already so much garbage from all the, there are many, many apartment buildings there, and every time on garbage day, it looks like all hell broke loose. This is only gonna be intensified if there is a gas station there. I'm not saying gas stations are dirty or whatever, but we know that people will just simply discard, you see it on other gas stations, discard, empty out the ashtray, or do whatever, and that is not helping this corner right there. So I would also ask that you please vote against that gas station. Also, there's a brand-new neighborhood behind there, you know, they didn't expect to build their house there and then end up having a gas station in front of their house, so.
Jason Reynolds, I'm at 3726 West 71st Avenue. I was here last meeting, and I wanted to reiterate my position before, that research has been done already regarding gas stations and their close proximity to the houses. The research has shown that when you're that close to gas stations, when your house is that close to a gas station, your property values sometimes go down. Insurance rates goes up because of the close proximity to the gas station, it says that you, you're near a hazard. So when you're near a hazard, your property insurance can go up. And if property insurance goes up, that means people's mortgages go up. And this is not something that this community or Prairie Creek subdivision, or the subdivisions near it anticipated when they moved here. If people knew that there was a gas station being proposed, perhaps they wouldn't have bought or built in this subdivision. So you, I understand that the town needs to get rid of this property, this parcel, because we call you all the time about cutting the grass, we call you all the time about the trees and things like that that cost you money. But having a gas station here, the homeowners in that area have already said they're not gonna support that a gas station if you build it there. So what'll happen is that you'll have another property, parcel, in your coffers that's not making money. And when Luke Gas Station says that they're not making money, they're not gonna keep putting money into something that's dead. They have to let it go, and when they let it go, the town of Maryville is not gonna be able to get those tanks out of there because it costs so much money. So I understand you need to get rid of it, but there's other avenues that you can take, and other venues that you can deal with to get rid of this parcel. You could, if it comes to it where you have an opportunity to reclaim this property, you could sell it to the homeowner association for a nominal fee, and then they can take it over. They can cut the grass. They can turn it into a park or something, over time, of course, but having a gas station there. Luke said that they have their gas tanks encased in three different encasings. The reason they do that, because they know that that gas tank is gonna leak eventually. They have seals that the gas tanks, the pumps come down to. Seals will break because they deteriorate. Gas is very potent. Gas can deteriorate a lot of things, and over time, it's gotta be replaced. And if it's not checked, then it'll leak into the earths. And as it leaks into the earths, it gets into the water system, and so on and so on. You already have this problem on Route 30, across from Luke's gas station and I-65. That property is bad. It looks bad. You don't want that looking that bad on 73rd and Wickham. So I implore you to vote no for the Luke gas station. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Katie Brown, 3759 West 72nd Avenue. I live directly behind the proposed gas station. So according to the Luke owner, the proposed gas station is gonna be three hundred feet from my property, my investment. Would you buy a house behind a gas station? No, you would not. How am I going to sell my property? I cannot sell my property. I would not be able to sell my property, I have a difficult time selling my property. Property values are going to decline. Blight will be created within the neighborhood. There's a Speedway one mile south. There's already another Luke gas station east already, Marathon already, in that same direction. Does it make sense? Is it a necessity? It is not a necessity to have a loop in front of a subdivision like ours. We do not need it. HUD will not insure a home within three hundred feet of a gas station. Once again, insurance will not cover a property. How about we think about other ways? Can we have a Maryville market? Can we have some other structural things to occur within that area that's going to be positive, positive for the community? Has that been thought of? Can we have a walking park, an exercise park, so we can bike, something that's similar down the street in Shererville, in that area? That can be constructed. That can be done. So instead of having a gas station that's gonna cause adverse health effects, a negative decline in our property values, to a community that's predominantly Black, that's gonna cause some problems. I think a best bet is not to have a gas station directly behind a booming community because it's gonna decline improvement, that's gonna stop growth and development, and this community does not want that at all, not one bit. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Terrance McMillan, 3716 West 69th Place. Following up what he stated, I'm probably one of the newest residents there. I moved in, me and my wife, this is our first home that we purchased in September. When our realtor showed us this house, I drove around the community after the fact to see what the community is, how it functions at night, all these different things, and saying from somebody that if a gas station had been there, I would have never bought that home there, never, because it's gonna increase traffic, it's gonna increase foot traffic as well as automobile traffic. I have a six-year-old son that he has now a yard to play in, different things he can do. I have a twenty-year-old son that he can do different things in the community and walk around and do different things. I have a twenty-five-year-old daughter, I have a seventeen-year-old daughter. Their safety is more important to me than anything, and this gas station being there causes a risk to us, whether we realize it or not. So is it more so important that this gas station get what they want, or I'll be focused on the rising community, the booming community, like she said? There's a house being built right next door to me. There's one that's being built right around the corner from me. I can look off my patio and see two, three more houses that are being built. This community is coming up, and this community is rising, and it's not something that we need a gas station to keep, to have this community. need a gas station to keep, to have this community to remain safe. So I'm asking you guys as well, please make this a no vote for the residents of Maryville and Prairie Creek Housing Subdivision. Thank you.
Darian Collins, I live in Innsbruck, 2505, but I just wanted to comment about the Luke issue. I'm a little surprised because I live right down the street from the Luke on 73rd and Taft, and I have, I, that station is kept very clean, it's maintained very well. But if you look at that area, it is in a commercial area. There, there are other businesses across the street. There's a funeral home and cemetery across the street. It is zoned completely different. Also, I have called the police on a couple of different occasions from that Luke station. One occasion, there were two young men loitering outside of the station, and one of them, it looked like he had a weapon in his pocket, and I was terrified. There were two young girls working in the station by themselves at night, and I was afraid for their safety. And so I called the police. Four police cars came in, they talked to the young man, I don't know what it was in his pocket, but they got him to go on and call the mom and all this kind of stuff. And so I can understand what you all are saying. You don't want to have those kinds of issues in your neighborhood. That station is not in my neighborhood. I live in Innsbruck. That station is down the street, down the corner. That stuff is away from me. But when I used the station that particular night, I was fearful for the young girls that were working in there by themselves. And so I support these residents. If we have to do something as far as a town petition, to have people who live in other parts of the community to support you and say no to this, we are behind you. I think as we drive around, I've never seen a Luke station in a residential area. Luke is in East Chicago, right there by the train station. Luke is on Ridge Road, right there in another commercial area. Luke is on US 30. I have never seen a Luke station in our area in a commercial area. And if we go in Shererville, St. John, Monster, they are not going to plop a Luke station, a gas station, in a residential area. Now, I know we need businesses and tax revenue and those kinds of things, but there's a lot of things that we can do. You know, you guys got COVID money? Do some studies and see what kind of businesses we can attract to put in that area. But I support you guys. If you want me to walk around Innsbruck and get some signatures for you all, I will. But this is not something we want to do in our town. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Tiara. Name is 3765 West 71st Circle. So we've just given a whole bunch of examples on why the gas station is not beneficial. One that was not touched upon is where the gas station will be placed at is a couple of feet away from where the bus stop comes in the morning to pick up the kids. Let's piggyback on the safety issue of daylight savings signs with it not being completely daylight outside and a gas station attracting multiple people that are not from our residents coming in our neighborhood. That's a safety issue and a concern for me. I have three daughters. I bought this house with the intention of their safety being a top priority, like the other guy. I rode around at night. I researched this area. It was a place that I wanted to call home. And for a gas station to be placed there, which is placing a big safety risk at hand, is something that bothers me. If you ever rode around our neighborhood, you will see that a lot of people don't have gates. Our area was back up to the previous house. With random people coming in our neighborhood, that's a hazard now that I have to worry about trying to sleep and protect my kids because anyone can walk up on the back porch and just manipulate their way into my household. I've never had a problem with violence like that, and with the times changing, it's something we have to start being at, at hand and facing right now. And placing a gas station there with random foot traffic, it's a concern that I'm worried about at this point. So I ask that you all, please think about not only the economic advantage, but look at our safety of us that bought homes in this community, that plan on retiring, that plan on having a return on our investment should we decide to leave. But at this point, that's something that's forcing us out versus us willingly leaving. And at that point, you're going to have to start looking at economic development problems that are in other areas where potentially abandoned houses start to reside and create other problems for the community. That's a problem that's being faced in the Chicagoland area and neighborhoods such as Roseland and other problems and Gary that's going on right now. So should the gas station decide to leave, that's going to be a hazard. But you also have to look at homes not being sold and potentially sitting around abandoned, which is going to cause more problems within the community. So please vote no on Luke coming within the community.
Hello, Larry Belcher, 3556 West 73rd Avenue. The, the couple of points the gentleman made about wanting to put a gas station in was for convenience, as a convenience store. And, you know, a couple of the items that he cited to me were, were pretty silly. He wanted, you know, he said we could go, go there to get toilet paper. We could go there to get bread. If I run out of those, I'm probably going to Instacart them. I Instacart most of my groceries right now as it is. The other issue, the other big point that he had was security, safety, and how well they maintain their facility. I personally like Luke's gas station. I go there about twice a day to get coffee and gas as needed. The one on 73rd, if you guys go there and ever look up at the canopy underneath where you pump your gas, look at how many lights are out, that constantly go out. I believe there are three that are completely broken and have been for months, and most of the lights are out. Not most, probably a third to a half. But that's, that's not what I want in my backyard. They seem like great guys, but obvi- obviously, if they have the Luke's there on 73rd, they know it's going to be a moneymaker there on, on Wickham and 73rd, and it will be a lot more traffic. You know, I tried to imagine how many people actually go in there per hour. You know, if you're in there for 10 minutes, there's probably 10, 15 people. So you could say, I would, I would just, this is pure speculation, but I would say between 100 to 200 people an hour, even on the low end, 100, if the station's open for 14 hours, you're talking about 1,400 cars or 1,400 people going in there every single day. It's a lot. I also would like to ask you to vote no for the Luke's gas station. Thank you.
So Sheila, when you talked to Luke, he had a real flair that this was probably not going to go his way. Is that right? He's kind of sensing that the BZA didn't support this, denied it, right? And that's the recommendation to the council.
Mr. President, I want to bring up just one point to all the residents. And Sheila, I don't know if this was discussed at the BZA or not, but way back when, I believe Mr. Reader was the one that brought in Prairie Creek into town, and this parcel was outlawed, so to speak, and zoned C2 as a part of that subdivision way back when. And I'm trying to remember, Rich, if this was '05 or '06 we did this, he came in. So C2 is not as intensive as our C3 highway commercial. Our C3 highway commercial allows 135 permitted uses. And that's important, folks, because if it's a permitted use and they meet all the criteria, the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, with all due respect, the town, through Sheila, is going to have to give them a building permit. So there are permitted uses in that C2 district right now where someone could come into the building department and want to put something on that property, and we would be hard-pressed, Mr. Svetinoff, right, to deny them?
Correct.
So this is a special exception. They're asking for our permission. I will defer to the two council people that are involved in this, Mr. Span and Mrs. Uszalak. I wouldn't want it, I just went through this. Brian, we just went through this on 73rd Avenue, didn't we? And so we, we defer to one another and try to work as a group. What's important in Ward 4 and in Ward 1, I'm not going to get involved in out in Ward 6. So I would defer to Marge and Don on their recommendation along with the BZA.
Well, if you want my recommendation, I am completely against a gas station going there. My, my Ward 4 is right across the street from, on Wickham Street where they all live. I've had a lot of these people here that have contacted me, they've talked to me out of Ward 1 and Ward 4, and I do agree with them. I have not talked to Don Span, but I'm hoping this gas station does not go through, and I will vote against it.
Mr. President, listening to Councilman Pettit saying that the, the criteria, the zoning and things of that nature, so I'm against it anyway because I don't think the people want it there, so I'm always standing with the people. But if we do do this, then are we putting ourselves at liability or, or anything of that nature?
No, it's a special exception.
It's up to the town council. You go ahead and consider the criteria, consider if they meet the criteria and make a vote.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, Leonard.
Yeah, and I agree with Sean in the sense of he's saying that's Mr. Span and close to Marge's Ward. However, I would definitely vote with them, Marge and Don Span, as to try to deny it. So that's my position. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, since we've heard from a lot of the public, they came out to basically hear our decision, and I realize we tabled this at the request of the written communication. We don't necessarily have to honor the written communication, do we, Mr. Svetinoff?
You don't have to. Traditionally, it is honored. What I would suggest is at this time, that all the comments that were made on public comment concerning this project be a part of the record when, when this matter is considered. So, so what we'll be doing in essence is accepting your comments into the record right now, so you would not have to return later on.
I guess that's what I was getting at, Joe. We've, we've heard everyone, they took the time to come out and make their voices heard, and we've unfortunately tabled this at the request of the petitioner who, according to Sheila, probably realizes this is going down the flames anyways. So, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, it's up to the, the majority of us. I'd throw it out there for discussion, Mr. President.
Hey, you know, for the record, and, you know, I've always supported Marge, I've always supported each council person and whatever their desire was. And if Marge is against this, then speaking for Ward 2, we are against it also, Marge.
Great, thank you. And I also want to bring up, I don't believe Maryville is the owner of that property. Sean brought to my attention, I believe it says 5M Investment Group? They are the owner of the property, not the town of Maryville. Not that it makes any difference. I'm still voting no. I do not want that gas station there. I buck right up to you guys. I drive out of my subdivision, I'm looking right at you.
I know we had the same exact situation in Ward 3 about a year and a half, two years ago, and you supported me then, so I'll support you now.
Thank you.
Will, Mr. Ward, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. My name's Gene Ward. I'm their precinct 22 precinct commitment for the last 21 years, and I go along with what my people say, that gas station does not belong there. I was told before that it was a Walgreens drugstore was going to be there. Mr. Reader told me that. I don't know what happened to that, but all of a sudden it got changed around, but I'm against it too. I'm with my people. Thank you.
Commissioner, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Do I have to say my address also?
No, you do not. Go ahead.
Michael Rich. I'm a businessman for the past 30 years. It's not good business, and, and it should be looked at as something that we should ask maybe Luke's gas station, is are they going to take away a gas station just a mile down the road, or are they going to leave two gas stations there? Because it doesn't make business sense to leave two Luke gas stations less than a mile away from each other. Thank you, Mr. President.
It's not going to matter much because I could do the math up here, and without Mr. Span, I'll, I'll be the sixth vote to say no. So this probably won't go through.
Again, again, Mr. President, I asked Mr. Svetinoff, you know, do we pull off the Band-Aid now and, and serve these residents right now? Again, I, I understand we tabled it, but I would make a motion that we take the, the recommendation off the table. That's my motion.
Second.
Let me, let me set the record then. You are denying the
Request.
Request
Of the petitioner.
Of the petitioner. And you're setting it for a vote now on the floor?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, very good.
Is that a motion?
Motion on the floor. Yeah. There's a motion and a second.
Take it under the BZA. Take it under the BZA action on the agenda.
So, Mr. White, would you mind just rescinding your motion to table? That would be, I think, the cleanest way to handle it. And Mrs. Uszalak, you can pull your motion too, or, and we'll get this back on the agenda tonight.
Okay, you're talking about to table?
Sean, we need to get it back on the agenda.
Yeah, the original, they did the original table.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I would like to resend the motion to table.
And I would resend my second at this moment.
Mr. Svetinoff, is that good? We'll vote on it, of course, but is that?
Yeah.
Any discussion on the motion? So what this means is that this will go back on the agenda as it is already tonight, and the motion to table it, we're just resending that. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. That is back on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to move it up on the agenda if you'd like. It's a BZA and large gathering action. Joe, can we do that?
Motion to move it up.
Second.
Right now.
Motion to amend the agenda.
Thank you. Motion to amend.
We have a motion to amend the agenda to hear the Luke Family of Brands petition now instead of later in the meeting. Proper second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next item of business is BZA and large gathering actions. Sheila Shine.
Mr. President, I have to tell you that I didn't bring the file in here because I thought it was going to be tabled, but I can go get it.
I bet someone here has a file they can hand you right now. Mr. Pettit has one.
Here's Sheila. Here's Sheila.
Petitioner is requesting special exception approval in a C2 community commercial zoning district on 3.6 acres to allow a convenience store and a fueling station. Petitioner would like to build a convenience store and a fueling station at 3580, 35, 3,600 West 73rd Avenue. The building will be approximately 37.4 by 110.8, where there will be washrooms, a kitchen, and a convenience store. The fueling station will have five pumps. The proposed plan will allow for a safe ingress egress to and from the site with minimal impact on the surrounding properties and right-ofways. Adequate access will be maintained for the emergency response personnel, and all building codes and 80 acre requirements will be met. The existing property is currently an unimproved field. The proposed improvements will result in a significant investment onto the property, adding asset value to the real estate benefiting those surrounding properties. Engineers, engineers will be coordinated with the Maryville staff to ensure that all town standards are met, stormwater detention and low-impact development. Petitioner will conform to all design and zoning criteria. The Luke station will employ 10 people, and those hours will be 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. And, Mr. President, the action taken by the Board of Zoning Appeals was denied with four votes and one abstention.
Thank you, Ms. Shine.
Motion to deny.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, and a second, a chair recognized Mrs. Uszalak to deny this Questions or comments on the motion?
Mr. President, do we have to have a, a roll call vote on this, or are we just a voice vote?
A voice vote would suffice, but we could certainly do a roll call.
Yes, I would like a roll call.
Not a problem.
Okay.
The only thing I'll say is I agree with the comments tonight, and the town could work with Luke to find another more suitable location for a gas station. And if the gentleman runs out of bread, give me a call. I'll bring some over to you. Madam Clerk-Treasure, would you please call the roll to deny this petition?
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuk?
Yes.
Councilwoman Muszalak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Bella?
Yes.
Six to deny.
Six to zero. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for March 8th, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes for February 22nd.
Second. Go ahead, Marge. You got the second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mrs. Yuzlak to approve the consent agenda. Questions or comments by the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to special and standing committees tonight, Budget and Finance, Councilman Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will, the only thing I have is that we'll have an ARP meeting a week from today at 3:30 p.m., and the purpose of the meeting is to discuss the criteria that we will have for residents and businesses to apply for grants of residents up to $5,000 and businesses up to $10,000. But we'll establish that criteria next week, and hopefully we'll roll it out on the next council meeting, if we get everything lined up.
Thank you. Council Affairs, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Public Works, Councilman Minchuck.
No report.
Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Environmental Affairs, Councilman White.
Yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to give some stats, some recent stats for the COVID, specifically the COVID infections specifically for Lake County. On 3/7, yesterday, actually, they had 74 cases, positive cases of COVID Omicron. Also, on 3/7, they had zero deaths from Omicron. However, today, I'm looking on the Indiana, Indiana Department of Health dashboard, they had 18 cases for the 8th of March, and they had three deaths for the 8th of March. Additionally, Mr. President, we have a seven-day positive rate of less than 5%. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we were almost at 29%. So it's coming down, but I'm just telling people, don't let your guard down. And the seven-day metric score, according to the maps, we're in the blue right now. So we'll be monitoring the blue, and we'll just continue to inform the public of the information that is available to us as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Oh, we did not have our March meeting. We reconvened in April.
Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, no report at this time, Mr. President.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Well, the bike trail is up to par, thanks to Torrance. And as far as the other parks, for the, for people who don't know, they have all been rehabbed in the town of Maryville. So spring is coming, so use your parks for the kids. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looks like the commission itself's coming here pretty quick, and Maryville has 56 properties on that list. And, yeah, it's, well, it's not as many as other communities, but it's a lot for us. And it looks like they're small parcels, so, and they're all in, the majority of them are on, I want to say Washington, 59th and Washington, and in that area. So they're all owned by, like, a husband and wife.
All of them?
Yeah, everything that I've seen so far.
Oh, they're rental property?
Right, it's owned by husband and wife. So we just, we're monitoring that. And Indiana University Northwest, they've got a group of students working on this problem, and I just stay tuned to that, see what they're doing, see what they come up with. There's 9,200 properties total here in Lake County. And so us, our 56 is part of that equation. So I'm just on top of it to see exactly where this thing's gonna shake out. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. I'm going to need to call a meeting. Talking with Steve and Jeff, we received the bid documents for the Horizon Bank pedestrian bridge, and there are some concerns. So Torrance, we're gonna need to get together. I will find a date. We do not have a planned commission meeting on Tuesday night, but Rich has got a 3:30 meeting, and I want to see how the calendar works out. I'll get with Pat and Torrance and schedule that, Mr. President. Unless anything else. Torrance, anything else?
Good evening. This month is celebrated a year anniversary of the center being open. We have some events that's going on that'll be targeted towards that. We're personally inviting all the council out for March 25th, for a sip and paint that we're gonna have at the community center. We'll be emailing you more details on that. We recently had a successful MMA event that was held at the community center. It was a great turnout, great cooperation and teamwork by the town of Maryville. Just a smooth night. It was just a good time, and had really enjoyed that. Also, you can mark your calendars for June 25th and 26th, as we will have the Legends of Harlem, the Harlem Legends, which is retired players from the Harlem Globetrotters that'll be coming through the town of Maryville to not only do a clinic with us, but have an All-Star game versus the town of Maryville All-Stars, so Councilman White can get his running hookshot ready. He's got three months to practice and prepare. So.
Make sure the paramedics be there, please.
Absolutely. I'll get your water for you.
Thank you.
One more thing, too. We will have some events for the kids for the week of spring break, which is the week of March 28th. So we'll be advertising and letting them know all the fun things that we're gonna be doing. It's gonna be open during the daytime at the center. Thank you.
So Mr. Pettit, Mr. White is our height for our team, right? Richard and I are gonna be guards, right, Rich?
I let you bring your cane on the court.
Special projects, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We got, we got a lot of the special projects going on. Our Fourth of July Parade, we're in the process of working on that. Fireworks will be July the 3rd. I sent you guys a copy of the revised contract that Marty Miller sent, and I spoke to Mr. Svetinoff, and he's gonna get back to me hopefully tomorrow so that I can communicate to Marty, and so we can continue to move forward with the fireworks part of Fourth of July Parade. The Fourth of July Parade will start at Dean and Barbara White Community Center, and we will go south. Normally, we go from south to north. This year, we're gonna go from the north to the south, and it's gonna kick off at 11 o'clock. Applications are available for anybody that wants to be a part of the parade. You're welcome to fill out the application and participate. We're looking forward, this is the first time in a couple of years that we've had one. So I'm excited about it. Also, we're in the process of working on a June 10th celebration that will be June 18th at the community center, and we're looking at a time from noon to 5:00 p.m. We'll have live music, bouncy houses for the kids, and vendors that will be out there from the community that'll be selling food products and jewelry and t-shirts and things like that. So that's, we're excited about that. And last but not least, we were approached, when we had MIS here last month for their, for Black History Month, the principal, Mrs. Bottom, approached us about Municipal Day. So on May the 10th, which is the first council meeting in May, we will have Municipal Day this year, and we will use the students from MIS to sit in our seats for that program. We've done them in the past, and we've had great response, and so she was excited about it. We will be meeting with her tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. to further this conversation. So I just think that it's another way of getting MIS 5th and 6th graders involved in municipal government and give them an opportunity, opportunity to see how government works from this side of the dais as opposed to sitting out in the audience. That's all I have.
Do we need to do a motion to have fireworks on July 3rd, Richard?
Let's wait till we, let's wait till we get everything settled.
Okay, sure.
Let's wait, and hopefully next council meeting, we'll be, everything will be finalized, and we'll be able to say that, you know, it's really gonna happen. Right now, it's where we need to be, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lake County Sound and Waste Management District, our representative is Councilman White.
Yes, Mr. President. I don't have anything to add. We will have a meeting on the 3rd Thursday of this month, so right now, there's nothing to add as far as the report is concerned.
Mr. White, have they started rehabbing the building?
Oh, yeah. They're like 60% there. I want to stop in sometime this week and see how far the progress has. Do we know we had talked about potentially a FAK-type grant? I don't know if they even.
Yeah, they can.
They can?
I think so. Can't they, Pat? I mean, it's a reimbursement grant.
Yeah, they can, but we'll have to have a conversation about that.
Yeah.
So I'll reach out to the district's attorney and the district's director and see if this is where we all want to be on the same page with that. I think that would be a great, in terms of our input, we're glad they're here. So everything's looking good from, you know, from my perspective. I haven't been down there in a couple of weeks, but it's moving right along. Hopefully, we'll have our first meeting there this month. So I will tell the council when it happens. Thank you.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Councilman Hardaway.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Stormwater Management Resources, our director is Matt Lake.
Just real quick, we received our lowest quote for the risk-free removal project for Meadowdale Phase 1. We're getting contracts together, and they'll get started soon enough, so it'll be exciting to see some of the old decrepit trees within the right-of-way being removed, ground down, disappear, and then we'll look at replacement later on.
Good. South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are working steadily toward ultimately identifying a new president and CEOs of the organization. Second, the staff has done and continues to do yeoman duty in terms of marketing and promoting Northwest Indiana, particularly Maryville. Last, I will supplement this verbal report with a copy of our latest legislative report that was just issued. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Territory Board, our representatives are Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Span. Jeff?
No report.
Department Head Reports, Chief Cortino.
Yes, just one thing I'd like to cover. I had met with Dr. Lackey yesterday regarding our adopted school program. Myself and Superintendent Brown signed the MOU. The officers that volunteered for it, they received their assignments, and this program should be up and running very shortly.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yes. I had talked to Chief Cortino a couple of days ago, because I was at Myers on US 30, and I noticed something that was really attractive in terms of like an anti-crime type unit out there. It was really amazing what I seen. I seen it right away, as soon as I pulled up in the parking lot. So what I'm going to ask is that, how available are those units? Because if we can move them around, or just even place them, if you get a chance, go look at them. They're very noticeable as soon as you drive in the parking lot.
What kind of unit was it?
It's, I call it an.
Solar power, isn't it?
Yeah, it has.
Solar panels on it, chief, that they've got like three of them, I think, or four.
Yes.
Who's they?
Meyer.
Meyer.
Meyer must have paid for them with their bad property taxes.
Well, I just think if it's not such an expensive, I think it was good if we're still looking at doing anti-crime type situations. I would love to see one down on 61st and Broadway. It has a four-way camera system, as well as the solar units that are attached to them. Also, it lets you know, it simulates police lights blinking on a unit. So it definitely attracts people's attention, like, this might not be a good place to commit a crime. So I just wanted to see if we can get some calls, and maybe it's something feasible we can look at, and then I can get back to the council with it.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, chief. Anything else to add, Torrance? Or did you finish up?
Nothing else, sir.
Thank you. Vicki Benel, Code Enforcement. Angie Chilcutt.
The economic development team has been fielding multiple leads, as well as a focus on business retention. As Councilman Hardaway mentioned, we are working on a new grant program to utilize the American Rescue Plan funds as an incentive for business and residential. So after next week's meeting, we should be able to finalize that and roll it out.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sheila Shine, anything to add tonight?
No report, Mr. President.
Mr. King, Public Works.
Uh, no report.
Okay. Mr. Reardon, anything else to add? No, sir.
Mr. President?
Mr. White, are you a department head?
I'm just talking here right now.
Go ahead.
No, this is for Steve King, actually. I just wanted to know when we'll be able to get that four-foot probe for the temperatures at the compost facility. You don't remember that one?
I.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure that's a meeting kind of question.
Yeah, I remember you had mentioned it. I don't know.
Okay, I'll talk to you off council diances. Thanks.
Mr. King, please make sure you see Mr. White after the meeting.
I will. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to General Orders, we have First Reading Ordinances, Ordinance 22-08. Madam Clerk Treasurer, would you please read this into the record? And please, Item 1 especially.
An ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending the salary ordinance 2129, the 2022 salary ordinance. Whereas the town of Maryville was desirous to increase the salary of the town's full-time employees of the calendar year 2022, and whereas the town council is still very cognizant of the continued uncertain effect of the current pandemic may have on the remainder of the 2022 tax revenues, as well as the future 2023 tax revenues, and therefore respectively, the town's 2022 and 2023 budgets. And whereas the town council found it in its best interest that the towns, for the town's financial health, to not include a raise for most town full-time employees in the 2022 budget. Whereas, however, the town council has identified monies available for use as a one-time bonus to be paid during the calendar year 2022. And whereas, the town council recognizes the hard work of the town employees for the benefit of the town's residents, much of which continues to occur during still difficult and unusual circumstances. And whereas, the town council desires to give a one-time bonus to full-time Maryville Town Court employees during the calendar year 2022, to assist with the fact that no raises were given during 2021, nor expected to be given for the calendar year of 2022. Now, therefore, it would be resolved by the town council of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, that ordinance 2129 is amended to allow for the following. Number one, six full-time civilian employees of the Maryville Town Court, as identified by the court as full-time employees, shall receive a $2,400 bonus. You want me to name them? Shonda Flowers, Amy Maddox Lee, Ayanna Lomax, Kayla Scott, Veronica Garcia, Andrew Vasalaklik.
Acclavic.
Beautiful job, except for the last.
Right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of Ordinance 22-08. Open for discussion. Judge, are you familiar with this ordinance and what we're doing?
I know that it said that's a one-time course of money for all employees.
Okay. Could we count on you to please let your employees know they're gonna receive this and how they're gonna receive it?
I think they're not.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Hardaway?
Yeah.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries.
Mr. President, may I?
Up, trysta, sure.
I would suggest for your consideration that Ordinance 2207, which is on for Second Reading later in the agenda, is the kind of original companion to this.
Right.
And maybe if you suspended the rules on 2209, they could both be passed this evening jointly. jointly, making the bookkeeping easier.
Can we suspend the rules with a member absent?
Yes, as long as you have unanimous.
Okay.
Want to suspend the rules?
We can do it now? Take care of this?
You're going on 2209, right?
No, 2208.
Well, point of order, Mr. President, to Trista. Should we do both 08 and 09 on second reading for bookkeeping? For Kelly to, then everything is done on second reading tonight, Mr. President, and we get it out of the way.
Right, but we can't combine this 08 with the 09.
Right, we got to do them individually.
Right.
First reading and then suspend the rules.
So, Mr. Hardaway, your motion is to suspend the rules to read this now on second reading.
Yes.
Is there a second? Mr. White? Thank you, Mr. Hardaway's motion. Mr. White, second, to suspend the rules to read this 2208 on second reading. This will need a unanimous vote by the council. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
All six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to Ordinance 22-09. This is an amendment to the salary ordinance. We are changing the code enforcement area and adding a new employee. Trista, anything else to add?
Simply that that position for an employee had been there previously as the part-time. It has now become a full-time position. You see the pay is listed there. It is the middle of page two. I understand that will, as listed on page one, be retroactive to February 23 of this year.
So the new employee is going to be a code enforcement officer, full-time, at the rate of $33,999-94 annually, right?
That's what I understand, yes.
What was the salary again?
Thirty-three thousand nine ninety-nine.
It's six cents shy of thirty-four thousand flat, is the way the math works out.
It's thirty-four.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Take a few cents.
Kind of caught me off guard there.
So a motion to approve by Mr. Hardaway, I'm sorry, who was the second? Mr. Pettit? Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The first motion carries. We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules, Mr. Hardaway with Mr. Pettit as the second. Discussion on the suspension. Hearing none, roll call.
Sorry.
That's to you when I say that.
I know.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call.
I'm passive. I'm looking for my other paper. Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
The first motion carries. We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules, Mr. Hardaway with Mr. Pettit as the second. Discussion on the suspension. Hearing none, roll call.
Sorry.
That's to you when I say that.
I know.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call.
I'm passive. I'm looking for my other paper. Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
The first motion carries. We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules, Mr. Hardaway with Mr. Pettit as the second. Discussion on the suspension. Hearing none, roll call.
Sorry.
That's to you when I say that.
I know.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call.
I'm passive. I'm looking for my other paper. Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
All six in favor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have suspended the rules to read Ordinance 22-09 on second and final reading. Motion, Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Pettit, for approval. Any other discussion on the motion? Anything to add, Trista?
Just briefly a comment that the budget amount that you all prepared in the fall is slightly different than this number, and some changes or adjustments will have to be made during the year.
Thank you. Madam Clerk Treasurer, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, Bella. Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Second.
Six in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to second reading ordinances, we have Ordinance 22-04. Sheila Shine or Mr. Pettit, help us out with this one.
You want me to take it, Sheila? This is a zoning change for the Silos Sanders Farm, which is 195 acres on both sides of Mississippi Street, north of 101st Avenue, running up to the Little League property. This will change the zoning from the established M1 industrial to the new CIS commercial industrial special zoning, which is what Amerplex at the Crossroads currently has. This will enable Crowe Holdings to begin developing the second-largest industrial park in the Town of Maryville, behind Amerplex. So at this time, I'll make a motion to approve 2204.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. White, for approval of Ordinance 22-04 on second reading, zoning change ordinance. Any discussion from the council? This is the second reading of an ordinance. We open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this zoning change? Yes, ma'am.
Tell Luke to build the gas station out there.
Ma'am, your name and address, please.
Darian Collins, 2505 West 65th Avenue. If that's going to be the second-largest industrial park, tell him to build the station out there.
Any other comments from the council? Hearing none. Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, the motion carries. Moving on tonight, second reading ordinance 22-05. Another zoning change.
Mr. President, this zoning change is for the new Liberty Estates. It is a zone change that will make it a PUD, a planned unit development. The previous zoning was C-3 Highway, and it was residential, and now it's going to be, it sits on approximately 200 acres, and it's going to be apartments, single-family, duplexes, and that's the zone change, the PUD for that particular development.
Thank you, Sheila.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of 22-05 on second and final reading. This is for the Liberty Estates development.
Mr. President, we were left a memo, and I don't know if you want this read into the record.
Would you please?
Okay. Date is March 7, 2021, I think it should be 22, but.
It is.
To Mr. Rick Bell, of Town of Maryville, regarding Liberty Estates' new PUD. Dear Mr. Bella, my name is Michael Walker, and I am the president of the Heritage North Homeowners Association. Mr. Hall, president of Luxor Homes Incorporated, reached out to me and asked me for my feedback regarding the continued construction in Heritage North, as well as his plans for the new adjacent PUD. As such, please note the following. I've had an open and positive relationship with Luxor Homes Incorporated. If I have concerns, I feel I can contact them and openly work through the concern. Number two, I have reviewed the PUD plan and have discussed it with Randy. A, traffic. He has assured me that a professional traffic study has been completed to analyze the resulting traffic from additional inhabitants. Said report was also approved by the Indiana Department of Transportation. Of course, we do not want excess additional traffic through our subdivision, but it appears that most traffic will flow outward toward Whitcomb Street. B, construction traffic. Randy has offered to block off the entrance between our neighborhoods during infrastructure installation, which is a welcome improvement to reduce truck traffic. Number three, values. Luxor Homes have continuously raised the quality and prices of its product in Heritage North, resulting in significant appreciation of our neighborhood. Randy has advised me he expects to continue that effort in the expansion of the single-family homes to the adjacent Liberty Estates PUD. Number four, housing mix. I understand there will be neighborhoods within the PUD consisting of single-family and duplexes, consistent with what he has built in Heritage North, retiree housing apartments, and some flex warehouse to the far south. Although I'm not a strong proponent of too many homes adjacent, this corridor down Whitcomb clearly needs more planned growth. Five, parks and green space. I understand that there will be several spread-out small areas in the neighborhoods, as well as a large central 10-acre park in his southern parcel. Number six, sidewalks and connectivity. I understand there will be adequate sidewalks to allow the additional neighborhood to safely move around, and that Randy has also offered to improve a safe crossing on Whitcomb to the bike trail. Based on the information above and what I've seen of Luxor Homes' efforts in Heritage North, our homeowners association backs the continued growth and investment into higher values that Randy proposes. Regards, Michael Walker. He gives his telephone number.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. I will add that tonight at 5:00, we did have a meeting with the Chapel Hill Farms HOA, as well as Mr. Walker, which is with Heritage North, a variety of residents. I want to thank Steve King, Sheila Shine, Matt Lake for being there and talking through some questions. The developer did a great job with explaining the drainage, the traffic flow, how all this came to be, and the residents felt very comfortable when they left, I believe. So thank you, Randy, for doing a good job with explaining and showing the plans. We also talked about doing this for every phase of the PUD. It's a large development, $120 million development. As you said, a bunch of acreage here, and the residents are very happy to hear that we'll be doing this along the way over the next five to seven years, so. Any other discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk Tre- oh, open to the public. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment on the development of Liberty Estates? Hearing none. Madam Clerk Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six zero, motion carries. Moving on tonight to Ordinance 22-06. It's another zoning map ordinance change for Liberty Estates. This is for the planned unit development. Ms. Shine.
So this particular ordinance is regarding, the other one was the planned unit development. This is not mine. All I had was the zone change.
This is a description of the land area, I believe. Mr. Svetnov, can you help us?
Correct. This is a description of the area that's going to be included in the PUD, and what the PUD is going to consist of.
So 100 acres, as we mentioned?
Correct.
As per plan, the final PUD plan?
Correct. It adopts the final PUD plan as well.
Is this needed, Joe, or are we just doing something here redundant?
No, it's not redundant. It has to be done.
Yes.
Okay.
Sheila.
I don't have it.
This explains the permitted uses for the PUD, going on and on. Yep. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Yuzlak, being woman's history month. Second by Mr. White, for approval of Ordinance 22-06. Anything else to add, Ms. Shine?
No, sir.
Are we good?
We're good.
Any questions or comments from the council? Is there any public comment? Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six zero, motion carries. Moving on tonight to Ordinance 22-22-07. This is the ordinance of the Town of Maryville, amending the 21-29, 2022 salary ordinance. Too many twos in all that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval. Madam Clerk Treasurer, anything else to add? This is the companion resolution. We should read into the record the other departments that are going to receive this bonus, and explain the difference for the police officers.
Let's do that.
Let's do that for clarity. Thank you, Madam Clerk Treasurer. I would see you at all.
I am going to skip down to what's being resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, that ordinance 21-29 is amended to allow the following. All full-time employees as listed by the department shall receive a $2,400 bonus. That is town administration, clerk treasurer, fire department, sworn and civilian, planning and building, police department, civilian employees, parks and recreation, stormwater management, code enforcement, public works, engineering, economic development, and human resources. All full-time sworn police officers shall receive a $4,000 bonus. The above-listed bonuses shall be paid on a quarterly basis in the amount of $600 for the civilian employees, and $1,000 respective to groups one and two for the police officers.
A little paraphrasing there, I think.
Yeah, I'm paraphrasing.
Okay. Trista?
Nothing further?
Thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Is there any public comment tonight on this ordinance, bonuses for town employees? Hearing none, Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Moving on tonight to resolutions. We have resolution 2209. This is a resolution of the town council, town of Maryville, approving the issuance of bonds of the town of Maryville Redevelopment Commission and related matters. This is for our paving projects for this summer, as well as equipment purchases for public works department. The amount is $6 million. That's probably where this $6 million came from last week by accident.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of resolution 22-09 for our paving project and public works equipment. Any discussion by the council? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolution 22-12. It's a resolution authorizing a transfer of monies within the funds of the Parks Department. The decrease from community center gift fund is $125,000. The increase to the Parks non-reverting fund is $125,000. Trista?
This is the first quarter's transfer from the gift fund to the operating fund for the Parks Department. You all know that there's $500,000 each year, and this is the first quarter transfer.
Any other discussion?
Subot.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Pettit. Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Hardaway. Any other discussion? This is general housekeeping. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Terrence, don't spend all that in one day. I'll take care of that. Tonight, we also had the American Rescue Plan voucher for approval, the ARP fund purchases for March 8, 2022.
Motion to approve $5,178 and 25.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Minchuck for approval. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Six approved.
Thank you. Motion carries. We took care of the BZA action earlier in the meeting. We're moving down to old business. Is there any old business before us tonight? New business, any new business? We have a petition to vacate certain drainage and utility easements generally located east of Taff Street, north of 93rd Avenue, and south of 91st Avenue. I believe this is for the Weiss property development, now known as the Marnac.
This is some cleanup, cleanup for the developer.
Yep.
On the property.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, Mr. President, for one point of discussion, and I see my good friend, Rich Anderson, approaching the podium, so he'll, he'll like this history lesson I have for him.
Oh, I know, I know this story.
I know you do.
Is there a second?
Second. He can have it.
Second by Mr. Hardaway. He was before you anyway, Mr. Hardaway. Open for discussion. Attorney Anderson, nice to see you.
Nice to see you. This is the petition cleaning up some easements that are in the way of the new development. And so basically, under the state statute, which is IC 367316, it's, a public hearing is required to be had by you, and we have served notice on, through the newspaper and to the adjoining owners of what's going on. And then basically, an ordinance will follow that vacates the easement. If you have a copy of the petition, you can see there's a drawing on the back that shows the ones removed, and then the new ones will be in place. And just to protect anybody who has an easement, the state statute says that they still have an easement if they have pipes in the ground, so nobody gets hurt.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Pettit?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Historically, the north side of 91st Drive was put in by Mr. Weiss, when it was twin acres, when he built the grocery store.
Yes.
There was a long, heated discussion and debate with the property owner at that time to the north.
Yes.
The five-foot spite strip still exists between the right-of-way line and the property line on 91st Drive?
I can't answer that, but I can find out.
Will you find out and let Mr. King and Ms. Shine know?
Yes.
Along with Mr. Svetinoff?
Yes.
Think with everything we've done for Don Rick, we need to fix that. Now's the time to fix it. Somebody to the north wants to come, they won't get a curb cut off of 91st Drive, correct, Rich?
I want to say that's not true. I want to say there was an agreement back.
Did they fix, that's what I guess I'm asking, is if they fixed that?
Yeah, that's, that's what it's too long.
It was an agreement with the, the developer to the north pitching in to cover some of the road expense that Weiss has already put in.
Exactly, and that developer did not put pony up, and so.
That's right.
We ended up with this on the plat, so between Sheila and Steve and you and Mr. Svetinoff, if you guys can.
But I think the agreement was made, I think it was with Sticklich.
Right.
And I don't think that agreement's gone. There was a curb cut that was settled. There was litigation over that, I just don't remember it. But we'll find out.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yeah, I would like to know a little bit more about the petition to vacate certain drainage. I don't quite understand what size area or, or.
Sure. There's a map on the last page.
There's a drawing on the back of the petition.
There's a variety of owners there that are all part of it.
And basically, the drainage that's being vacated is being relocated, so it's already been approved as part of the new project, so there's sufficient drainage, so we're not taking away drainage, though we don't.
So it's actually a cleanup of the.
Yeah, it's, it's relocating the drainage so that it fits between the apartments.
Do we have an update, Rich, on the timeline, Don's timeline? I mean, is Weiss Way out of the building, and do we?
I, I made a call today. I didn't get a return call. My last understanding was, is I've gotten the demolition permits, not permits, the applications from Sheila, and they've been given to the contractor. I don't know that they filed yet. There is equipment in the building that has to go through an auction, so, or some disposal process before the buildings can be torn down, but I think the.
That's happening like right now.
Okay.
Or it did, right.
I've been by there several times. They have been working.
The building is being, the liquor store is closed.
Right.
And vacated. And so the first thing is to get the mechanical out of the building.
Got it.
Copper and such, you can't demo that.
Yeah.
After it's cleaned out, equipment is sold off, then the demolition work will start.